Go ahead and call this meeting to order. You can take the roll.
Here.
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 We have a motion to approve minutes from the June 5th study session.
I'll second.
While I was late to the meeting, the study session, I was there approximately at 6:00 PM.
On the new minutes, does it also have a meeting at 6:00? Yeah, okay. Great. Any other, anything else?
Aye. Yes.
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 Yes. Do we have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for June 5th?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Yes.
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 Yes. Move on to the findings of fact, case CON 2018-001. Do we have a motion to approve those findings of fact? Any discussion?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, so now we'll move on to public hearing. Case number 2018-08, 4210 South Delaware Street, urban lot development. And this case has come before the Planning and Zoning Commission. What we'll do is take a vote to open the public hearing. We'll have a presentation from staff, presentation from the applicant, have an opportunity for public testimony, and then we'll have time to discuss and make a motion about that. So, do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Go ahead and start with the staff presentation.
Yes. Will Charles. I believe I've met all of you before, but if not, I'm Will Charles. I'm a planner in the Community Development Department at City of Inglewood. Tonight, we're talking about 4210 South Delaware. This is an urban lot. An urban lot is defined as being 25 feet of lot width, which is under what is currently allowed for the, to develop a new lot in the R1C Zone District. Staff is recommending that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve to allow for construction of a one-unit dwelling on a vacant lot at 4210 South Delaware. This property and all properties surrounding it are located in the R1C Zone District. This property is 3,125 square feet, and has 25 feet of lot width along South Delaware Street. The property qualifies as an urban lot in our R1C Zone District. Urban lots of, urban lots that are recorded at one time containing or currently having a one-unit dwelling on or before the effective date of this title, which was February 24th, 2004, could just build a house, you know, demo the house and build a new one if they wanted to. Because we do not have any record of a house being built on there through research of my own, as well as the owner of the property, this one is required to go through a Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing. This property is part of what was the Jackson Broadway Heights subdivision. This was platted in 1890, and it predates the city of Inglewood by about 13 years. The first zoning ordinance in the city of Inglewood was done in 1940. This ordinance saw in the subject property R2, and the properties to the north and west of it were R1, and this was actually the boundary for where City of Inglewood ended to the south. The R2 district regulations in 1940 specify that a lot area of 6,000 square feet be required for, for a lot. The 1940 ordinance did not permit the development of lots smaller than 6,000 square feet, unless they were under separate ownership at the time. So you couldn't, you know, split the lots, but if they were already there, you could develop them. Again, all found records indicate that no house was constructed on this property. The city has revised their zoning ordinance multiple times over the past years in 55, 63, 85, and 2004. None of these permitted the development of a lot in the R1C Zone District with less than 4,500 square feet. In 2014, Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council enacted amendments to the UDC that permitted urban lots with a minimum of 3,000 square feet of lot area and a minimum of 25 feet of lot frontage, which is where these urban lots come from. The house that's being proposed will be a 980 squi, 85 square feet footprint of a house with 16,060 square feet of habitable space. This proposed site will comply with minimum lot area, maximum permitted lot coverage, minimum lot width, maximum height, minimum setbacks, and bulk plane requirements for urban lots in the R1C Zone District. During our analysis, we had to review the following criteria. The lot can otherwise, cannot otherwise be, cannot, there we go, that's a good word to use. Cannot, not, cannot. Cannot otherwise be used for any purpose permitted within the Zone District applicable to the property. Since this is an urban lot, this is the only thing that could be developed on it. No other thing allowed in the Zone District, which is the single-family Zone District, but no other lot size could be developed with this. The waiver modification, if granted, is necessary to afford relief with the least modifications possible of the development or dimensional standards otherwise applicable to the property. Again, the property is not asking for any sort of adjustments or variances to what is allowed under the urban lot in the zone, or in the district. This property will have one-car garage, two-car, two-car parking spaces outside the park, outside the garage and a driveway in the back. The submitted site plan complies with lot area, setbacks, bulk plane, all of those. This property is, development property is consistent with the spirit and intent of the comprehensive plan. This is under the following three. Under the objective for a live 1-1, which allows for housing that meets the needs of all income groups, including appropriate type and location of housing. Objective for a live number 1-2, allowing for investments that improve the housing mix and serve different lifecycle stages and groups with special needs in appropriate locations, including both smaller and larger unit sizes and a wide range of housing types. And then objective live 2-1, which encourages homeownership and property improvement, including home additions by making city regulations and rules residence and business friendly, streamline application improvement process. The next one is the lot coverage, bulk plane, height, setbacks, and massing of the proposed development would not vary substantially from the rounding, surrounding properties, or alter the essential character of the neighborhood. For this one, it pretty much, it meets all the, again, it meets all the requirements of an urban lot in that Zone District. As far as houses in the surrounding area, the house to the north of it is 1,248 square feet, and the lot to the south is 1,921 square feet. So it's pretty much right in the middle of those as far as square footage. The final criteria is that the proposed development is compatible with the established development patterns and intent of the Zone District. The established patterns for the neighborhood include pre and post-war, would frame and brick single-family homes on traditional city grid. Most of the, have varying architectural styles. The proposed one-unit dwelling is compatible with the established development patterns and intent of the Zone District. Again, staff recommends approval for this develop as a one-unit dwelling on an urban lot. And I can answer any questions?
Darren?
Just, I think I heard this a couple of times. The only reason why this is before this board this evening is because by ordinance, it is required because it had not previously been developed. Is that correct?
Correct.
And this zoning has been in place without any substantial changes since 1940?
Right. The only difference between what was allowed in this zone area, the R2 in 1940 and now, is that allowed for two-unit developments at that point. Somewhere along the way, in one of the earlier, like 55 ordinances, it changed to just single-family, but in our, yeah, that was the only dramatic.
So for 78 years, this zoning has been in place?
Yes.
Is anybody 78 years old requesting they want to develop this? Or is that person happen to be younger? Just curious, your general observation?
The applicant is younger, the owner might be 78.
Okay. All right, that's, that was just a, in other words, it's been in place a long, long time.
Right, correct.
Okay, thanks.
I have a procedural question.
Okay.
So I was just looking, you know, at the 16-94 in the, in the code, and then how we need to, or as we're looking at this, we would decide whether or not to waive or modify certain things. So, part of it, I'm hearing you saying that typically in the R1C, you don't have a lot this width, but in an urban lot, this is an urban lot, so it's a certain width. So I was just trying to figure out what, is there a certain thing we're looking at in terms of waiving or modifying?
So, under the development standards, which are, they're 16-6, there's the abilities for an urban lot. So if, like Mr. Freemeyer was saying, if the lot, you know, already had a house, you scraped it, and they wanted to build a new one, you could do that. If you wanted to waive or modify what is under that, that would be the, you would be the board, the commission to do that. So, without that, it would, you know, follow these.
Ron?
I think the order is kind of weird. Since Mr. Austin is not here, shouldn't Ms.? I said, since Ms. Austin is not here, shouldn't Ms. Marshall be sitting as part of the commission?
It's a voting member.
Thank you.
Yes. Gotta put you to work.
Aaron, do you have any questions for the applicant?
So, written in here, the, this property you couldn't have developed on it between 55 and 2014, just because you needed a larger lot to make that happen?
Yes, it was, it's not legal to develop. Yeah, and the, the 2014 change to that kind of allowed it and made it easier for this, there's an actual, you know, process in there now, and this lot could be developed. Before, I believe the same thing could have been said about if there was a house on it currently. The change is mainly for lots that never had a house before, because really, it's a non-conforming lot, is, is what that would be if a house was on it currently, and it wanted to be scraped and then built again. There'd be a non-conforming lot, and there was provisions for that. The provisions that changed in 2014 were for these specific cases.
Was it part of the neighboring lot at any time? One of the neighbors owned it or something?
Right, so if, if that were the case, they would not be able to subdivide into the small of a property. They would have to meet the current standards, which is far back as, you know, the 1940, they wouldn't have built it, built, or could do a subdivision to a lot this small. I looked back till about the 70s and 60s and 70s, and I didn't find anything that indicated these were under the same ownership at any point. I asked the owner to do the same, and she couldn't find anything as well that stated that they were ever under the same ownership.
Somebody's just been owning this property for that long and just paying tax on it, and it really had no use?
Right, I mean, you know, it could have been one of those things where someone bought it at a tax sale and just didn't realize they had it, or, that's actually how the current owner ended up with it, is through a tax sale, so. Things like that can happen.
Do you have a general sense of what the typical lot size is for other houses in the surrounding area?
On this block, I know the one to the north has 75 feet of lot width. Driving through the area, I mostly saw probably 50-foot lot width developments besides that one. A lot of the houses, you know, were built a while back, and so most, a lot of them actually are pretty narrow, similar to this one. They don't have the narrow lot width this one does, but I saw at least two or three houses that were probably 25 feet or less in, in width for the actual house.
Okay, I don't think we have any other questions right now.
Okay.
You can hear from the applicant.
Idea. Christine Martin, and it's 598 Lester Lane. It's spelled L-E-E-I-C-E-S-T-E-R Lane. It's Castle Pines, Colorado, 80108. Patrick, it was you that.
That's the one. Who knows?
So, good evening, I'm Christine Martin, and my husband Matt Martin and I are here to ask you to approve our application to build a one-unit dwelling on 4210 South Delaware. I have stood before some of you before, about a year and a half ago, with this, for the same type of hearing. We asked to build this house on a small lot at 4635 South Pearl Street. And for those of you that were not here, that was granted. We did build that house, it was completed early 2017, listed for sale, as this one will be, and was purchased in July of 2017 by a nice young couple, Tripp and Caitlin, who love the house, love the neighborhood, have been, you know, taking really good care of the house, the yard, contributing to the tax base here, and just enjoying Inglewood. So, we're asking for the chance to do that again here at 4210 South Delaware. To address some of the factors in the application, and I might repeat some of what Will said, so I apologize, but the lot is 25 feet wide and 125 feet deep, and is currently and has been vacant. As it currently sits, it is serving no beneficial purpose to the residents of the city of Inglewood, but with the addition of a new custom single-family home, the visual aesthetics of the lot will improve, as there will be a brand-new custom home on the lot, complete with professional landscaping. Additionally, the buyer of the home, as hopefully the buyers of 4635 South Pearl do, will take good care of the home, contribute positively to the population and the tax base of the city of Inglewood. The waiver modification is necessary to afford relief, as there are no options available for modifying the lot size. And as the lot sits, the only other option for it would be to remain vacant, which would serve no constructive purpose to the city of Inglewood or the current owner. And to give you a little bit more history about the current owner, Jean Okerman is 85, she's a widow. I met her, I think she came to the city, kind of trying to figure out what she could do with this lot that she bought in a tax sale years ago that's just been sitting there. And I think Will mentioned, he knows that there were some people that had developed a small lot the year before. But I don't think he gave her a name or an address. So she and her niece drove around and found that home, and knocked on the door, and spoke to the occupants, and asked how they liked the home, and how they'd like the people that sold it to them, and just had a nice conversation with them. Those owners, Tripp and Caitlin, gave Jean the name of Carl Fury, who is the builder that we will be working with, the same builder that built 4635 South Pearl. And she sought out Carl and asked if we would buy her lot. So I went and met with her, met with her son Alan, and we reached an agreement for buying the lot contingent upon approval by you to build this home. When I called her yesterday to let her know we were all set for the hearing, she was thrilled. She just said, "Thank you so much." I think this would have been really hard for me to do on my own, and I really appreciate you guys helping, you know, get us through this process. And hopefully, you guys get to buy the lot after the hearing. So that obviously would be a big benefit to the current owner, and the other choice being, she gets no benefit and just has a vacant piece of land that she can do nothing with. The proposed development is consistent with the spirit and intent of the comprehensive plan. As I think Will said, the Planning and Zoning Commission has specifically allowed for this process to improve the aesthetics and use of the land in Inglewood, and this home will do that. Again, the vacant lot will turn into a single-family home with a yard and occupants who will care for the home, and also, probably, I think, as with Tripp and Caitlin, encourage more people, such as friends and family, to be in the area and potentially move into the area. Additionally, existing homes on 25-square-foot lots are entitled to modification and/or replacement, and building a new home on the lot would be consistent with this allowance. The proposed project does fall within all the lot coverage, bulk plane setbacks, and massing required by the city. We're not asking for any modifications to that, and it will not alter the character of the neighborhood. The home has been designed to blend in with both the design of the older homes in the neighborhood, as well as some of the new homes that have been built, or some of the homes that have been modified, pop tops or things like that. I don't know if anybody had a chance to drive by 4635 South Pearl, but it will look very similar to that home, which is just a few blocks away. The proposed development is designed to be compatible with the established development patterns and intent of the Zone District. As I mentioned, it will likely encourage the betterment of the neighborhood, both visually and from a population standpoint. It will enhance property values on the street, again, because of the way the real estate market is going. Got our last one, when we met with you, by the time it was built, the price increased that we were going to ask by about $100,000. So with the way the market's going and what these homes are worth, I think it will also contribute positively to the property values in the neighborhood.
For the applicant? None? Thank you.
No questions?
Yeah, no questions.
I was just curious about the timeframe of when you were building the house.
You asked me, or you asked the builder? We tease our, our friend Carl is the builder, but approximately a year. If he were here, he'd say six to nine months, but my husband and I know that realistically, it's about a year. Yeah. We can kick him in the tush, it'll go a little faster, but that's about our experience with the last one.
Thank you.
Just curious with, you know, having this smaller urban lot size and having, you know, three-foot setbacks on either side, has that been any kind of issue for your current tenants, or?
Well, their owners, they bought the house, and not, not that we've heard at all. I mean, they're, they're, maybe did rocks for landscaping on the side, so obviously nothing foundationally, and then a fence. But they haven't mentioned anything, and they've got Carl's number, they've got our number, and so we haven't heard anything with that being an issue. They've got lots of space, both in front and back, for yard and space recreation, so.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Will, did you have anything else to add at this time, or?
No, I was gonna say, we have a slide actually with the 4635 Pearl on there, just for anyone in the audience, or in the town, or anyone here that hasn't seen it before. We'll leave it on that one if we want to.
We're gonna have an opportunity now for public testimony. It's an opportunity for the public to provide testimony regarding this case, and all of the comments should be directed up here to the commission. We'll give each speaker about five minutes to be able to tell us their thoughts. I have a list here of three people that we can call forward, and, and start with Ralph Faragon. Step forward here, Nancy will.
Ralph Fargone, 4268 South Delaware Street. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good, I'm glad you can. I'm sorry to say that you had to have this meeting to turn this down. Okay? You've got a 24, a 25-foot lot. After you take the three-foot and the three-foot off, how much you got left to build a house?
Just, you know, we're not able to answer questions, so we're not.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to show you, okay? This is ridiculous. I hope you realize this, and consider the people that are on the street, okay? And the gentleman that made the statement here about the size of the lots, he better do his homework, 'cause he's absolutely wrong.
Mark Manzaneres?
Mark Manzaneres at 4226 South Delaware. I live on this block, a couple, couple houses down from where this lot is. And when I seen the sign up, I, it definitely raised a concern. I know that, you know, it was said in this, here today, that, you know, this lot would just stay vacant, nothing would happen to it if they don't develop this home on it. But I also know that some of the neighbors bordering this empty lot made offers on this lot, reasonable offers, that were turned down. So it's not like the lot would have stayed empty. It could have been enjoined or used by one of the neighbors on either side. You know, Ralph was mentioning, you know, it's a 25-foot lot, you can build a 19, maybe 18-foot with overhangs, you can maybe get 18-foot of a house with. with on there in, and from the square footage that they talked about, there's not going to be much of the yard and landscaping left, especially if there's a two-car garage in the back. You know, the neighborhood's an old neighborhood, you know, I've lived there for quite a while, and most of the lots are, I think, they average about seventy-five feet. Mine is, mine does, and I know Ralph's doesn't, I think the one between us is double that, or a lot more than that. You know, I understand that for this one home, the property value of this one home would increase, and it probably will increase the way the economy's going, but it doesn't mean that'll, it's what'll happen to the existing homes. Existing homes that are bigger, and worse, have more value, will probably actually lose in value, because when they, when Zillow and all that comes out and they market houses, you know, they look at the neighborhood. So it actually would be a negative for us people that already are there. You know, I just, I just recommend that this council don't, you know? Like Board Member Mike was saying, that this ordinance has been in place for a lot, a lot of years, and so this would be to modify it, and I, you know, or to put a variance to it, and I ask this council not to. And, you know, I'm awfully surprised that the city of Inglewood is lot, has an employee of the city of Inglewood lobbying for this. You know, instead of just stating the facts, he's actually lobbying for, for this variance, and that's kind of strange, coming from a taxpayer. But that's my concern, and I hope you guys decide not to pass it. Thank you.
James Smith, forty-two sixteen South Delaware. There goes my mountain view, there goes my peace and quiet in my backyard. I've wanted that lot since I moved in, and this eighty-five-year-old lady, she took down the trees, broke my fence, I went and talked to her, and I said, "No, that's, I won't get involved, I'm not taking an eighty-five-year-old lady to court over a fence." But a house, with my mountain view gone, I'd like to see all the specs, because this isn't, this isn't my backyard. The other side doesn't have two stories. If it was one story, it wouldn't be so bad. My privacy? I don't know, it's... That's why we have elected officials.
So where do you live in relationship to the property?
South.
Just the south, right, directly south of the property?
So, yeah. I have a hundred foot fence.
Doesn't look like we have anyone else here that hasn't had a chance to sign up to speak. So, anyone else want to speak, or any other rebuttals from staff or? And did just want to mention as well, that in the staff reports and things like that that come from the city, they put those in the affirmative, so it's not necessarily them advocating for a certain thing, but that's always how they're, they're written, so I just wanted to clarify that as well. Okay. Do we have a public hearing?
I move.
Second.
Nope, I think we're ready to close public hearing and then have the session.
Yes.
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 I move that we approve case two-zero-one-eight-dash-zero-eight, public hearing, urban lot development at four-two-one-zero South Delaware Street, as stated in the staff report.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Do you want to start?
Ah, well, I think I've been on a couple of public hearings similar to these, and was part of the process in the development of the urban lot. I hear the voice of the community, the surrounding neighbors, and... And I see that, you know, that this can be somewhat intimidating, and yet, this is the rule of law, and it's allowed. And it's not going out of any of the boundaries, or asking for anything special. It's zoned this way, and, and so I don't see any reason to deny this.
Thank you. The issue ultimately comes down to, based on the ordinance as it's written, can the Planning and Zoning Commission reasonably accept this, or is there a reason to deny this, based on the ordinance? And they're asking for zero variances based on the ordinance, so it gives us little alternative relative to that. It's my understanding that, with all due respects, the neighbors who would have a view obstruction that they have not had, presumably since day one of owning their home, presumably today would have, have a view obstructed that they previously enjoyed. But views, as I understand, in the state of Colorado are not protected by both state statute and local ordinance. So regardless of whether we like the view, or don't like the view, or even have an opinion regarding the view, it's my understanding that state law and local ordinance does not protect view, which is not dissimilar to what we've had with various redevelopments along various places where there was previous, previously a view that was desirable to neighbors that today there is not. And so that doesn't give us an option to say, "We don't like this, so therefore we'll vote it down." We also, because somebody makes an offer on a piece of property, does not compel the owner, regardless of how genuine that offer is, of selling to one party or another. There is no compulsion that because an offer came in beforehand, that that is the best final end offer that a property owner must accept. If three property offers came in at the same time to any one of our properties, or five, or whatever that magic number is, all came in at the same moment, the owner could have the option to do nothing, or to accept the lowest bid, or what seems to be to any other bidder, and an opportunity that the owner should have taken but chose not to for whatever their rationale, and that's what's known as property rights. So within those property rights, and my point of saying, it's been zoned this way for seventy-eight years, regardless if one cannot obtain the property to enjoy it to their, their liking, they don't have the opportunity to, if they couldn't obtain it and put it and enjoy it how they like it, to then dictate what will be for all times, as long as they happen to live there and/or their heirs, or designees. And I think therein lies, lies the issue. Within the city of Inglewood, we do not have the purview, as the Planning and Zoning Commission, to make up and/or enforce arbitrary laws that are not on the books. And therein lies the issue in the crux here, but by virtue of the fact that it's required based on zoning and, from nineteen forty, and some ordinance changes that have been in place and available for all to see, and the latest resolution was four or five years ago, puts us in a position where we have no choice, regardless of our personal desire, but to vote in the affirmative. And so therefore, I will vote in the affirmative when that time comes.
Are there discussions? I would just like to say too, I, we always appreciate it to have, we always appreciate it to have neighbors and community members come out and give us their thoughts on, on these cases. So we do thank you for your time and coming out and letting, letting us know how you feel about the application. I would say that the, you know, these small lot developments are fairly new in the, we've only had a couple since two thousand fourteen. I will say, in, in visiting the one that has been built, and actually kind of visualizing what it would look like, it's, you know, and I know it's going to be similar, it's not exactly the exact same lot, obviously, but that they've done a nice job in really building a quality home, and it is only, you know, so many feet that you're able to build in, but that is what some people want, so. And I do appreciate that they're not asking for many, or for really for any variances from the urban lot standards that we've looked at. And other properties on the block as well can build to two stories if they desire to do that, or build up to the maximum height required. So, that's all I have to add right now. Call for the vote?
Yes. And for previous, for reasons previously given, as much as I have, as much as what I, I can understand how difficult it may be, it meets with the requirements as set forth within the comprehensive plan, as is previously stated by staff, they're not asking for any variance relative to any ordinance, and it, it does add to what has been here, and regardless of whether we have a particular affinity for aesthetics of a development or not, if it's within the code and it meets that which we, which we've previously set out, which is a matter of public record, we have the opportunity to approve, and we have no grounds by which to dismiss in the negatives, so therefore I'm voting yes.
I find that, that within this process, the applicant has proposed a development that is within the comprehensive plan, and again, fits, fits the overall design of what the city of Inglewood wants to see in terms of development of lots of this nature, and therefore I vote yes.
I vote yes as well, for the reasons stated. I too went by the property on South Pearl, I drove down the street on Delaware, and we all live in Inglewood, and we understand that some of the development challenges that are coming before us. This does meet the requirements of R-1C urban lot. There only, if there had been a house there before, this wouldn't even come before us. And so there's no, nothing that I see that allows me to say anything, but yes, I agree to this.
I too drove past the, 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 um, I'm, I'm, I'm...
I vote yes for the, the reasons previously stated. I think the, the proposed structure will find its place in, in the neighborhood, understanding some of the concerns about the height. It still meets the development standards that have been put forth in the zoning code, so I find no compelling reason to vote no, so I vote, I vote yes.
I vote yes as well. It is in line with the comprehensive plan, no vacancies requested, it's in, within the rights of the owner, and it fits the zoning code, and I believe it's a respectful design.
I vote yes for the reasons previously stated.
I also vote yes for the reasons previously stated, and, you know, there's just, unfortunately, been no reason to vote against it, and it does meet the needs of the Inglewood plan.
I vote yes. It also, the, the applicant has a proposal that meets the goals of the comprehensive plan, as stated in the staff report, and meets the criteria that we have in sixteen-nine-four in the UDC, and also has the ability to be able to meet the character within the zoning district, and create more opportunities for housing in Inglewood, so... Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd move the approval of the bylaws as written and presented to this
Do we have a second? Discussion? As written, okay.
Yes.
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 Excellent.
Okay.
What?
I'll rest easier.
We have an opportunity for public forum. Does not appear as though we have any public avail, or public here for that, so we can move on to staff's choice. Thank you, Wade. No attorney present? Commissioner's choice? Judy, start with you.
I don't have anything.
I have a lot of words.
Daryl?
I'm looking at the time with this sleeve.
I would say that this is interesting, that this is the second time we've had this, at least in my experience, I can't remember if I've been on, this is the third one or the second one of these urban lots, but it does seem to be quite a bit of opposition every time. It's not, it's not, I don't know exactly why that is, but yes, I don't, it's interesting that happens, seems to happen every time. It's here or there, but...
Okay.
The, the only thing that I noticed...
The, the only thing that I noticed is that it didn't seem like the people that were here had, had seen any of the plans, and everything's available online if they want to, that was because some of the concerns that they were raising, I understand that, like, being opposed to it, but they didn't know the width of the house, didn't know the layout of what had been proposed, and I assumed that everything was made available, and they just hadn't seen it.
We, we did receive notice that everything was posted and everything has, so, two folks to see. All right, adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.